Brown's area school district board director, committee director, session on Thursday, September 19th at 7:00 PM. Brown's area school district board, one talk, five hours, 3:00 to 8:00. First, uh, roll call, please.
That's what I said! (laughter) Been going this for nine, that's three, twelve months, here. Roll call, please. Now that it's here.
Mr. Assett?
Here.
Mr. Bain?
Here.
Mr. Bashir?
Here.
Mr. Del Ros?
Here.
Mr. Dorsey?
Here.
Mr. Gammon?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Just stand with the president.
(laughter) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, superintendent remarks.
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item three, public remarks on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and nature of business on agenda items. Scene number one. Number four, adoption of agendas related materials for cooperation in the minutes. Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item five, approval of the August 15th, 2013, four minutes. Motion by Director Terebekia, second by Director Delaroz, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item six, Director Bain, board treasurer.
I motion to approve the attached information reports of August 2013, general fund, cafeteria reserve, capital projects, construction fund, cafeteria fund, title one, title two, A, three B, treasurer's financial report.
Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item seven, approval of the following funds you see before you, payments you see before you. Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Pass.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
No.
Mr. Assett?
No.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
No.
Item eight, solicitor report, after Davis. Thank you. Education, Director Dorsey.
Item eight, I move to approve the attached list of extracurricular sponsors and department ads for the middle school and high school for the 2013-14 school year with compensation consistent with BDA contract.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Item B, I move to approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the district and California University of Pennsylvania for the high school early admin program effective for a total of five years commensurate with a review and approval of all necessary common law issues.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Bain, questions?
Question. Uh, I'm meant to bring this up the other night, I forgot. Good program, I think it's outstanding. How do we get the word out? How does, how do the students, senior high school students know about this program? And, and more importantly, their families?
What will happen is, once this is approved, we'll notify the university. They'll come in and speak to juniors and seniors. From that point on, there will be a letter disseminated to parents notifying them that this program, it costs that amount of money, I think it's $254 in that ballpark. Uh, and then they'll be, uh, they're interested, you go to the guidance office, there's registration forms you fill out, et cetera, et cetera, mailed to the university and we'll get a schedule.
Okay, great. I, I think adding to the website too would be a good idea, just, well, alright, good idea. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Item C, I move to approve the agreement between the district and Wesley Spectrum Highland War and approve private school students. The district will be assessed at the rate of forty percent of the $260 daily rate.
Motion by Director Dorsey?
Second.
Second by Director Bain, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item D, I move to approve the attached service provider agreements, happy health services, skilled nurses services, and $25 per hour interim healthcare, substitute skilled nursing and aid services.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item B, I move to approve the settlement of due, of the due process matter, 13193-12-13, by creating a compensatory education fund in the amount of $55,000 to be used towards funding of education programs and therapy for the student. Any funds not used shall be returned to the district and authorized, uh, school superintendent to execute any and all documents necessary to finalize and settle the due process matter, 13193-12-13.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Go ahead.
I'm gonna be voting no on this matter because I believe the lawsuit is directed in the wrong direction. Um, I don't think we should be looking at things that, you know, cause enough damage. I think we should avoid the damage. I think we should be using our solicitor to make sure that it goes the right way. I don't think that's the direction we're going to take.
Jeff, I totally agree with you. And I think as a board, we need to look into recouping, uh, damages, uh, from another entity because it keeps seeming like, um, we are being sued because it's other people's employees doing something wrong or, uh, causing these lawsuits. So I think we as a board, our next step should be to go after them to pay this or reimburse what we have to pay. We can't, we just can't. It ha, it's happening too much.
I agree.
And it's coming on us.
I agree with Mr. Dorsey as well. I think, I think we should, I'm gonna vote yes for that because at that point in time, the damage has been done to our district. When we say yes, and then we take suit or action against other parties to recoup this $55,000, but in order to do that, I have to vote yes, so the harm has been done to this district. And then we go after it. That's our reason why we vote yes.
Where you can see, opposition. I did vote if you're correct.
Yeah, but then, that's not what they're gonna do. We have to make that happen, Jeff. Yeah, at this point, yeah. We have to make that happen.
But the damages aren't done until you get the damage done and then go after them. I don't wanna wait until the damage is done and then we wind up with a complete lawsuit.
The, the, the downside on that, in my opinion, is that we will continue down this line and we will, the damages will continue to increase. If we were unsuccessful and going after somebody else, we could, we could cost even more money. That, I'm not, I don't think we should put, do that to the attachment.
This is, this is what two lawsuits we're dealing with now in a couple of years here.
I'll quit.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
No.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Personnel, Director Delaroz.
Uh, item A, I move to approve the attached list of intermediate unit ones, emergency substitutes.
Motion by Director Delaroz? Second. Second by Director Harvey, questions?
Question. Is this the same, uh, maybe junior one, you have no other option? We don't have no other option on behalf of the director.
They go through, she goes through, that's all.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion, let's say, one second.
Second.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, going to the next session for personnel?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We're going in at, uh, 7:09. For personnel.
(inaudible).
Okay, any motion to come back in? Motion by Director Sacks, second by Director Delaroz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We'll be back in at, uh, 7:40. Before we go any further, let's, um, let me make this comment, Linda, I would like you to document what I'm going to say. This pertains to a comment that I made about a year ago about comments and rumors in this district. I'm going to give a warning again. Any of our employees making comments about other employees or parts of this district or making comments about the district, we can find and track it back to you, you will be liable and we will seek disciplinary action. Unless you know what you're going to say is true, I wouldn't say it. It's becoming a problem and we're gonna start tracking down where these, where these comments are made. Uh, it's something we don't wanna do, but we're gonna do it. Okay, Mr. Delaroz? Do you have that, Linda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, item B, I move to add Maricola Martino and Elizabeth Johnson to professional substitute.
Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Item C, I move to hire Maureen Zaff as a part-time, four and one-half hour teacher's aide with salary consistent with the district SCIE contract effective September 20th, 2013.
Second.
Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item D, I move to hire Shelley Zalak as a part-time, half, four and one-half hour teacher's aide with salary consistent with the district SCIE contract effective September 20th, 2013.
Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item E, I move to hire Sherry Sturbutzel as a part-time, three-hour cook with salary consistent with the district SCIE contract effective Friday, September 20th, 2013.
Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item F, I move to hire Sandra L. Jones as part-time, three-hour cook with salary consistent with the district SCIE contract effective Friday, September 20th, 2013.
Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item G, I move to hire Louisiana S. Jones as part-time, three-hour cook with salary consistent with the district SCIE contract effective Friday, September 20th, 2013.
Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Bain, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item H, it troubled me, I think we're reading way too many of these motions for resignations of our young, good educators. Although I know she's moving on for better and bigger things, it's still hard to accept these, losing some good people, but, uh, I move to accept the resignation of Mrs. April Bellback, high school English teacher effective October 16th, 2013.
Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Do you have a?
At this time, I'd like to amend the motion to, uh, add new motion?
It's a new motion, Linda.
Um, are you going to amend this motion?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, you wanna, we have to make the motion, I guess, to amend the agenda, yeah?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You wanna make that?
I make question.
Okay, go ahead. Second. Roll call, please, to amend the.
Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to eliminate the position of dean of students.
Second. I have a motion by Director Terebekia, second by Director Assett, questions?
I understand the nature of the, uh, motion, however, it's, it's just a title, correct?
Title, person handled, person handled discipline, no pay.
And with the addition of the assistant principal, those are no longer, or those services will no longer be needed, is that?
That's correct.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, you're right. Uh, this is a new motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Seeing no one. Uh, roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
No.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
No.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Okay. Consider a motion to amend policy number 305 to read long-term professional substitute. A professional who substitutes for the same person for twenty consecutive days, all earned long-term substitutes must be approved by the school board. Utilization of a long-term substitute prior to the approval by the board is authorized when their use is required to maintain, to, continue in the educational program and services of the district. Retroactive approval shall be recommended to the board at the next regular board meeting.
Motion by Director Terebekia, second, second by Director Assett, questions?
Comment.
Comment, go ahead.
Mr. Gammon and Cheryl, I applaud this, that I think this is the direction that the school district needs to be going in. I will be voting yes for this, I think it's something that needs to be rolled down and I appreciate the hard work that you put into it.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item seven, approval of the following funds you see before you, payments you see before you. Motion by Director Delaroz, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
No.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item D, I move to acknowledge and accept the attached letter of resignation of Joseph Jenkins, assistant varsity football coach, effective March 21st, 2013. Second. Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Bain, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Item B, I move to hire Mrs. Bonnie Alessco, head middle school cheerleader coach, 2013-2014 school year, compensation set at $1,200.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item D, I move to hire Mr. Gregory Galvestine, head middle school girls' basketball coach, 2013-2014 school year, compensation set at $1,600. Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Consider a motion to authorize the attached budget transfer for the 2012-2013 school year. Motion by Director Bain, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Uh, roll call.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Athletic Director Assett?
Item A, I move to acknowledge and accept the attached letter of resignation of Joseph Jenkins, assistant varsity football coach, effective March 21st, 2013.
Second. Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Bain, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Item B, I move to hire Mrs. Bonnie Alessco, head middle school cheerleader coach, 2013-2014 school year, compensation set at $1,200.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item C, I move to hire Ms. Jennifer Collett, assistant varsity cheerleading coach, 2013-2014 school year, compensation set at $1,200.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Del Ros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Terebekia?
Yes.
Item D, I move to hire Mr. Gregory Galvestine, head middle school girls' basketball coach, 2013-2014 school year, compensation set at $1,600.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Terebekia, questions?
Question. When, when does middle school girls' basketball start?
It started already, uh, we had a couple of issues we had to clarify and we're directly moving to the clarifications and we are doing that.
Okay, so, there you, okay.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Dr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?[1283.58]
doing that.
Okay, so there is.
There is. Okay. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
No.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Del Rosso.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gammont.
No.
And Mrs. Terabecki.
Yes.
I'm going to ground Director Harvey.
I move to acknowledge the attached transaction between Direct Energy Business LLC and Hess Corporation, the district's current provider for electricity, natural gas, and energy solutions offerings, and authorize the president of the board to sign the attached consent signing the Brownsville Area School District contract from Hess to HEM pursuant to the attached consent.
Second.
I have a motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Terabecki. Questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Del Rosso.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gammont.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mrs. Terabecki.
Yes.
I move to approve the purchase of 120 tons of infill soil mix from Walker Supply Incorporated for the high school softball infill in the amount of $4,978.84 to be paid by Capital Projects.
Second.
Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Terabecki. Questions? Roll call.
Uh, Mrs. Terabecki.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Gammont.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Del Rosso.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
Yeah.
And Mr. Assett.
I move to approve H&amp;H Water Controls Incorporated as the sewage plant operator for Cox Donahay and Central Elementary School sewage plants that it costs at $30 per hour. Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Terabecki. Questions?
Question. Sure. You did say that there was a capital demand, correct?
Correct. They can't, they cannot arbitrarily just come in. There are schedule hours, Mike.
They're saying maybe six hours. They'll take it under control. They'll, they'll go way down. It depends on how, would they find.
True.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And I'm all over, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
Yeah.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Del Rosso.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gammont.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
And Mrs. Terabecki.
Yes.
Personnel Director Del Rosso.
Item A, I move to approve the bidding for roof repairs on the elementary school buildings.
Second.
Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Bane. Questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Terabecki.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Gammont.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Del Rosso.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
No.
Mr. Bane.
Yeah.
And Mr. Assett.
I move to execute the contract with Eleanor Kimball Associates according to agreed upon payment milestones and authorize the commencement of the conceptual design phase of the elementary facility. Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Del Rosso.
Uh-huh.
Questions?
We have Buildings and Grounds meeting Monday night, am I correct?
Yes.
And that was at six o'clock. Was that advertised in the paper for six o'clock?
I believe so.
I didn't find out about it until that morning about nine thirty, ten o'clock.
At the previous board meeting, the board decided to meet at six.
Never got, never, I never got an official note that we were gonna have a meeting, the Board Building and Grounds meeting at six o'clock. I went back through all my emails and I did not have them.
I apologize for that, but at the previous Buildings and Grounds meeting, the board decided to have a meeting at six o'clock.
I don't know if that's a hundred percent accurate. I know that I asked for the meeting to be at six o'clock due to the fact that I had to travel that night.
Right.
Uh, I turned and sent you an email the following morning saying, hey, I'm good, I 'll be around if I travel. I, I can keep the meeting the same. And I offered. You're saying, I just wanted to make clear that it wasn't because of my.
Not, not just because of you, it's just based on the fact.
Well, I came into that meeting Monday night and I believe Kimball was here at six o'clock and he gave packets out to everybody that was on this board except me. I don't know why I wasn't given the packet. I was very disappointed when I found out that night that I wasn't given one when I came in. And, uh, therefore I can't support a company because I, my voice will be heard of the public.
Was, was your packet sent to you the next day?
No.
I?
I still haven't received it.
I'm glad you got it back.
I, I'm very disappointed.
I came in late and I will say that they came up and gave me a packet.
You got one.
But it was because I had to talk to her that morning and I baked in and gave me one and I thank her.
I just felt that I shouldn't have given one to her.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, correct?
Correct.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
No.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Del Rosso.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Nine years, yes.
Mr. Gammont.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
And Mrs. Terabecki.
Yes.
Okay, um, item nine, public comments on non-adjunct items.
Can I make a question?
Sure, go ahead, Victor.
There's a lot, a lot of concern over building project is will raise taxes and pretty much everything's been explained that if it's done properly, taxes won't be raised. Our last building project, we started out with a budget of eighteen million dollars. By the time the architect, the project manager, um, everybody else told us what to do, it went to twenty-five million dollars. In this project, we've discussed as a board, we have so much money to spend, that's what we spend it. And we will direct everything as to what we want. It's not gonna be, um, somebody running this up, change orders up to how many more million dollars. And if we do our job as a board and do this in steps and keep our eyes on this, then that's the way it will stay. And as a board, we have to do this. That's all I want to say.
Well said, Mr. Harvey. If I could add to that, um, obviously it's been a long process to get to this point and we're building an elementary facility. And the motion, um, as the public heard, was purposely limited and it's for that purpose as you say, so that this board, um, could stage gate this each step of the way, make decisions accordingly, be involved with our architects and the design and, and what we need for this district. So I thank this board, um, for the work to get to this point. Obviously have a lot of work going forward, um, but I think it's, we've come to the agreement and the understanding and how we wanna approach this project and will be successful and ultimately will lead to long-term, um, benefits for our students.[1357.16]